Okay, all right. Jeffrey Foster.
Here.
Chief Nick Hill. John Cronteras.
Here.
James Riddle.
Nick's coming in.
Okay, all right, Stuart Roberts.
I'm here.
Jennifer Andrus.
I'm here.
Brady Wilson.
I'm here and Fred, James Riddle's here, I've seen, actually I think he said Riddle earlier, sorry.
Yes, I saw his picture. There's here, and Mark Woods.
Here.
And Chief Hill came in, okay. All right. Okay, we do have a call.
All right, thank you very much Fred. Going through here, we have minutes in your packets and I'm not sure if folks on my email, but the minutes are from our most recent monthly meeting as well as going back, actually to almost, actually two year ago, that were provided by the staff, obviously. Following December last year, there was some staff transition, retirement of some long-term staff, Miss Bridges, and then obviously, the pandemic which delayed getting these minutes typed up, so as you see, and I'll let Fred comment if he feels necessary, the minutes, most recent minutes are more in the style that we have been accompanied to and seeing as the further we go back due to, I guess, time issues with recordings etc., we're getting more high-level summary notes here. The, having looked through these, especially going backwards to December of last year, I think the essence of the meeting is captured. I have no objection personally to approving these as we, you know, from my standpoint. That said, before taking a motion on this, I would like to get thoughts from other commission members on the minutes packet.
This is Stuart Roberts, I went through all of them and I have, for the most part, some very limited minor changes, typographical type things. There were a couple of these that looked like they were missing some details about the case, but that might be something that can't be recreated at this point, I don't know, especially the older ones. But I can, I'm happy to send in just a PDF with all my handwritten notes on each of these, if that helps.
That would be excellent Stuart, and Fred, I had a couple typographical things I'll also forward to you. And I'll try, as I mentioned when we spoke about this Fred, add any additional details, you know, that I think are relevant, especially to the older ones, it's from my handwritten notes from the time. And I'll get those to you, so that being said, with the additions and edits from Mr. Roberts and myself, do we have a motion related to the minutes packet provided to us by the staff? And or their other comments from any commission members?
I'm going to approve.
Jeffrey. All right, we have a motion from James on the minutes, need a second?
Second.
From Mr. Wilson, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much, moving forward, communications from the chairman. I did hear from two members of the commission about serving on our Planning Commission zoning book subcommittee, Mr. Roberts and Mr. Riddle, which I'm, you know, very happy about, I would like to have a third member for this committee. Is there anyone tonight that would be willing to serve as a third member for the Planning Commission Subcommittee specifically related to issues of the zoning book?
Jeff, I'll be glad to do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Woods. Great, so that constitutes our zoning book Subcommittee, of Mr. Roberts, Mr. Riddle, and Mr. Woods. As previously, just for folks for background, this, this meeting met on the third Tuesdays of each month as needed to address issues in the zoning book. And so I'm very excited, having worked on that committee as well, I think it's very valuable for our city, so I'm happy that it's going to be started up, and I'll also be joining as I can to help with that, although I will not be a voting member of the Subcommittee as Chair. And so, Mr. Woods, if you would chair the committee as Vice Chairman, that would be excellent, and then I'll leave it up to you guys to determine whether or not we'll meet, or the Subcommittee will meet in January, or start back up in February.
I will do that, Jeff.
Thank you so much. Any communications from you, Mr. Woods, as it relates as Vice Chairman?
Nothing, nothing that's, I am going to meet, I have met with some city council and I'll continue to meet with them, there were just some issues that I had seen and some stuff we had previously approved that had changed, and I just had some concerns that I'll bring to the council. Instead of bringing them here, I just think it'd be better to do that, so I'll, I'll address those there, but thank you for those Planning Commission members who have helped me look through some of that stuff and address some of those issues.
Okay, great, all right. Moving on to old business, item number one has been withdrawn, this was a rezone request from Gerd to C5, is withdrawn from, by the request of the applicant. Item number two, which is a text amendment to our zoning ordinance. Having reviewed this, I would like to move this to the last agenda item, as I think that we're going to have some discussion on this. And at this time, I'd like to, if there's a motion related to that or any objection, I'd like to hear from the commission members on that, I want to make sure that we give our other cases tonight adequate time and I feel like we're going to have some comments on this one.
I make a motion, we move it?
Okay, got a motion from Mark, and I was thinking a second from James. Mr. Or Fred, would you call the roll?
Chief Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Andrus? Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, all right, thank you, we're going to talk about old business, item number one, PC case TX 20-12-06 for those joining online, at the end of new business tonight, so moving forward to new business, item number one, PC case RS 21-01-01 has actually been carried over till next month at the request of the applicant, so for anyone here to hear about, this is a property address at 508 Tamworth, it is a resurvey of one parcel, one lot, and the two parcels, two lots. The applicant is Thomas and Julie Cox, that, that case has been carried over till next month, February 2nd, and will be addressed then by the Planning Commission. Moving on to item number two, PC case AD 21-01-03, 275 Lakeshore Parkway, the applicant, Joe Snyder of SDP Acquisitions, on behalf of the owners Wildwood Center LLC, Parkway Fox LLC, and Mont Belvieu Properties is here to request an amendment to their Wildwood Center South redevelopment plan to permit the construction of a new two-tenant retail building. Mr. Snyder, are you with us? And or representative from Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Snyder isn't, but Sarah Newland is, how are you guys?
Thank you, Sarah, Sarah, if you attended a Homewood Planning Commissioner BZA meeting, but if you would state your name and address for the record before stating the reason, purpose for your request, I also would like to make a comment to those joining us online. The applicant will present their case, I will open the, the case up to public comment. I do ask that you try to use the chat feature or raise your hand if possible, Brian and I are watching. For everybody that's been on Zoom meetings, multiple people trying to talk at the same time, becomes a little inaudible, tough to understand, so if you would, please, you know, have some patience with us as we call on people, you know, if there are multiple folks that would like to talk, and then finally, I would also like to request that all comments related to the case be limited to two minutes to make sure we have enough time for all those that want to speak to be able to do so, and then also give them the other cases tonight that we get to them in a reasonable timeframe. So with that, Sarah, if you want to go ahead and state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Yeah, my name is Sarah Newland and my address is 144 My Way Circle, Santa Rosa Beach, Florida. And then did you say that you just go ahead and, and kind of say what we're doing?
Yeah, if you would, go ahead and describe the case for the commission and the public listening, the purpose of your request, etc.
Sure, absolutely, so we are working on the development of a shopping center out parcel, right now it's currently a parking lot, and what we are proposing is a multi-tenant, there's going to be two buildings with restaurant users, most likely, one will be 2325 and the other is 3,500 square feet.
Okay, do you have any additional comments at this time related to your amended development plan that would benefit the commission members or the public?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, we're going to open this up to the public for questions. I did not mention, if there are a series of questions that are similar, we will summarize those back to the applicant to make sure they are addressed by the public, so does anyone joining us on the Zoom have a question for Sarah related to PC case AD 21-01-03, the Lot 1F Wildwood Center Parkway application? Okay, I'm not seeing anything, Brian?
Nope.
Okay, all right, with that, I'm going to close the public portion and open the case up to questions, comments from commission members to the applicant. Any commission members have questions?
I'll ask if you have any tenants lined up yet.
We do, we have two, well, three really, and so right now we're trying to decide the final two.
Okay, and Fred, for the record, that was Ms. Andrus with the question.
Thank you, sorry.
I don't, I don't think I have any objection to this just normal out parcels development.
Right. I, I do want to comment that I had an exchange with staff earlier about, there are two essentially green islands that are, looks like are going to be impacted somewhat by the redevelopment, and I guess addressing or replacing those will be part of the final process with staff to make sure that everything is in compliance with, with that, is that correct? What are Vicki's on?
Can you hear me, Jeff?
Yeah, barely Vicki, yeah.
Yes. The construction plans and the site plans, no permits will be issued without, you know, compliance, so we'll take care of that at that time.
Okay, great. Are there any additional questions, thank you for confirming that, Ms. Smith, are there any additional questions from commission members related to the, the case before us now? For the out parcel redevelopment as part of Wildwood? Hey, do we have a vote or a motion to approve?
I'm making. Second, Mr. Riddle.
Thank you, Ms. Andrus. Do we have a motion, a second?
The motion was made by Mr. Riddle and seconded by Ms. Andrus, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Off our road. Chief Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, your application for amended, amended development plan has been approved. Thank you very much for your time this evening, and I look forward to your project moving forward, thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Yep. Moving on to PC case AD 21-01-04, the applicant is Matthew Bartholomew for Water Brands Real Estate. This is 195 State Farm Parkway, the reason, purpose for the request is an amendment to their Wildwood North redevelopment plan to permit the construction of a new 3,200 square foot restaurant, Whataburger. Mr. Bartholomew, are you with us or representative from Water Brands?
This is Matt Sims with Gonzales Strength and Associates, we're the civil engineer on the project.
Okay. Hey Matt, Matt, would you state your name and record for the, for the record, sorry?
Sure, Matt Sims with Gonzales Strength and Associates, our address is 1550 Woods of River Chase Drive, Suite 200, Hoover, Alabama, 35244.
Okay, great, and Matt, would you basically state the case for the public and the commission members and or add to anything I previously said or any other comments, color you want to provide?
Sure, essentially what we are doing is, there is a landlord on the property who is going to essentially be demolishing the existing Regions Bank building and preparing a pad-ready site for Whataburger to then come in and build a new restaurant on the lot.
Okay. Any other comments related to this before I open it up to the public, Matt?
That's all I've got.
Great, all right, we're going to open it up to the public again, I would ask that comments be limited to two minutes, please enter your question in the chat so Brian or I can call on you, and then or use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. No one at this time? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, all right, we'll close the public portion, are there any questions from commission members from Mr. Sims on this PC case for amended, or for a final development plan for AD 21-01-04? I will make a comment, I do greatly appreciate the, the detail in the packet, and then also the thoroughness of the development plan that was submitted, I don't know if that was your group or not. Do greatly appreciate fairly
Thorough.
Thorough, exactly, thank you, Mr. Riddle. Application, it addressed all of the questions I would have normally asked tonight, and also included, I believe, even a landscape plan or proposal, which is a nice thing to see as well, so thank you very much.
I appreciate that, I'll be sure to pass that on.
Yeah, absolutely, please do. Any questions from commission members for Mr. Sims before we move on? And or is there a motion related to AD 21-01-04?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to approve 21-01-04.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Cronteras, a second from Mr. Wilson, Fred, would you call the roll?
All right. Chief Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, your application is approved, you know, again, thank you for the detailed packet and looking forward to your development moving forward.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to revised agenda, going back to old business, PC case TX 20-12-06, the applicant is Richard Carnagio for the owner Derek Walczek, this is a request for text amendments to the West Homewood zoning ordinance, specifically Article 4, Section E, sign standards, allowed signs, the addition of murals, as well as, I believe there's a rooftop sign that is in the packet for consideration. And we have received from staff a proposal for the text amendment related to this. Is Mr. Carnagio with us or Mr. Walczek?
And I think Vicki may be trying to get your attention about this.
Okay.
Vicki, you're, you're muffled Vicki, I think you're trying, but you're muffled.
It's telling us. This, what we are trying not to do is create a text amendment. West Homewood, it started out as discussions, but we're concerned that if it becomes a by right, if you add it to the ordinance and it becomes a by right choice to have these roof signs and these murals, it's going to get out of hand quickly. Right now, and as we've discussed many times, this particular section of the code is not very good, and at this point, Planning Commission would have to approve any mural or, or any other type sign that isn't on the list. That being said, I was charged with coming up against some, or putting together some criteria by which you could judge these murals and restrictions, and design criteria so that you can choose on a case-by-case basis whether or not you want to approve these. Now, that, all that being said, again, I don't really like the way that ordinance is put together for West Homewood. I don't, but right now, we're here, we're here now, and we need to address this particular sign issue for this property owner.
Vicki, this is Brady. Hold on one second, hey Brady, hold on one second, I just want to make sure Mr. Carnagio or Walczek is not on the call here.
I, Jeff, I've reached out to Mr. Carnagio, trying to call his office, I was told by the secretary he was out of town but was coming back, and I emailed the contact information to him so that he would have that if he wanted to try to call in, I don't know exactly where he was, but I gave him the contact information, even though we sent also a letter to him. He was out of town when I called this afternoon.
Got it, thank you Fred, thank you for taking the extra step there as well. So, Brady?
Vicki, I was just going to say wherever you were when you, at the end of your, what you were saying just now, please stay there. Whichever direction you are facing, stay there, because we can hear you at the end.
Hey, Vicki, can the city help me understand how the mural a block away, which was put up about a, right out a year ago, not quite a year ago, how that was approved and how that was, went through the city for that, for the building? Adam Thrower owns it, I'm not sure the number again of the building, but he brought that to us and they put a mural on the side of that building, how was that approved?
Um, I have no idea, I never saw, as far as I know, there was no permit granted, I don't know if somebody made the decision that was art, that we don't have a provision for it in West Homewood, and that ordinance, so I don't believe any permit or any permission was granted for it.
Are we sure we want to add murals to that area? Or any part of Homewood for that matter?
Well, yeah, that's, I share the concern with the, I guess, you know, I, I understand currently West Homewood zoning is a separate entity in, in the zoning book itself. However, I, I have some concerns with the overall West Homewood zoning ordinance that sits in the zoning book now, and I'm afraid this creates a little more discordance throughout the rest of our city, especially as it relates to signage.
I, I, I agree 100%, what I'm getting at though, what I think we have to answer is, how do we allow one building to do it, now we're going to tell another tenant no?
Yeah.
It's a block away. That, that to me is very, well, I mean, if we're forcing something in the city, then why wasn't it enforced when that, when Adam put his mural up? I mean, we can't just all of a sudden say, well, this time we're going to enforce it, but we didn't enforce it last time. I mean, that's sketchy.
Yeah, I was told it just went up a week ago, I don't know, but Jeff.
Not, no, no chance, I live here, that, that mural's been up over a year ago.
Well, bottom line is, he didn't get permission, he didn't get permits.
He's out of compliance.
He's in violation.
Violation.
Mr. Chairman? Wyatt put a comment in the chat box that said, Wyatt Pugh put in, the mural was not approved, it just appeared.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pugh, Mr. Cronteras, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I have a, I have a kind of a question that realizing that the zoning in West Homewood is different from the rest of Homewood. I mean, how can that make any sense that Edgewood, downtown Homewood, signs all over the place, and then in West Homewood, signs are not, are not approved, I mean, that's, that's very confusing to me.
Well, I, so.
Like I said, I understand the zoning is different, but different, I mean, but why should the zoning be different in Homewood, in West Homewood, if Homewood is one, one city?
I, to your last comment, Mr. Cronteras, I 100% agree with you, and I would like to see the, the entire city, I was speaking again as myself here, under the same sign ordinance. I think that makes the most sense, I think Mr. Woods' comment is also very important, we need to figure out, I mean, if he just appeared, I mean, maybe an enforcement issue.
So, one, one other question, we've got a mural, we have another mural that may have just appeared that is on the side of the Chevron building, at the end of, of, well, right there by Taco, Taco Mama and all that, and then let's go down into 18th Street on the right-hand side, the wall that now faces that statue in front of the, the hotel, whatever that statue is, that wall right there is a mural, so how, how did those two murals appear?
And also another thing, Mr. Woods, there was a beautiful mural at the Nabil's Building for many, many years, and nobody ever said anything about it.
Well, my point is, so my, my point is, I, I think, we're, city, we're in a precarious position. We've got four murals that have gone up now that, from what I'm understanding, say is the city is, they just appeared. We didn't have any enforcement, now we've got one person doing the right thing, asking for it, and we're telling them no now, but we've allowed four to go up that have just appeared.
No, I, I hear your concern, Mr. Woods, and, and Ms. Smith has typed in a comment, I guess this is exactly from her, I'm going to read it verbatim, this is exactly why I do not support murals as by right choice, which I, I understand what you're getting at there Vicki, and I think I agree with you on this. All that being said, without the applicant here as well, to me, this is an item that I feel like needs a little more thought from the Planning Commission and staff, and I think is, is worthy of going just to address, one, do we want murals not only in West Homewood but in Homewood, then what can we do? I understand that we cannot limit or dictate essentially the content of the mural, as I think, I think there would be some sort of legal issue with that. So then the broader question is, do we want these, and if so, what sort of limits can we place on them? And therefore, I think this is, in my opinion, an item that is best served going back and either being carried over since the applicant is not here or drop, and, and addressed in a Subcommittee, the Planning Commission, and then with the city council and the city attorney, to make sure that we are doing everything correctly.
Mr. Chairman, if you, I understand that you Mr. Chairman, if you, I understand that you just formed a subcommittee for reviewing the zoning book.
Yep.
Right, how, why don't you include there the possibility of making the zoning in West Homewood the same like in the rest of Homewood?
I would, I am a very big supporter of that, John. I think our previous subcommittee that Mr. Riddell, former chairman Higginbotham and I were on, as well as staff, Ms. Smith, et cetera, put through a couple of different plans to do that. And I think it's worth going back and trying again to address that. I think that, to me, working with the council reps, members of West Homewood community is, is the thing to do, and I think that's something we should strongly consider.
I agree.
Yeah, and Ms. Smith, I see your comment here that you do add a comment that there's a whole argument about what is art. She is approaching, I guess, this draft text that was originally proposed with these documents as actual commercial murals, not artwork. And so, yeah.
So we have to deal with the art as well.
Exactly. I understand that, yeah. And so we're getting very tricky to me.
Sharon, can I, can I mention a few things just based on some of the work that we've done? We went down this road last year, Council Wilverton and I had on the agenda, and I am one to think that the public art aspect of it is an asset to the city. You know, I look at the, you know, people literally taking tours downtown Birmingham of the murals, you know, the pictures, you know, they take of themselves in front of the walls in Avondale. You know, I do think there's sort of a fun community aspect to the art aspect of it. So, you know, my thought is, I hate to do away with that, just say, no, we don't want any of that. I, for one, think the welcome to Edgewood is an asset. I like that. I think it's a nice addition to the downtown area. I did sit down with Sherri, was that last month, Vicki? I can't even remember when I was up there for something else. And she and I sat in her office for a while and had this discussion and took it back to President Wyatt. And we started, you know, I, you know, this whole thing with the content, you know, we can't manage the content, et cetera. Is there some kind of board that we could put this in front of, that we could assign this to, like the beautification board is what occurred to us? Is that something that we could put? I haven't spoken to Nick, who's their new liaison, I was the former liaison, or to Nancy, who's their new chair. But is that a board that we can use in that way, that when you do have something, you take it for approval?
Yeah. I mean, I would be in support of that. I think, I think my, my broader, bigger picture, one of my broader, bigger picture issues is, one, I totally agree with the concept of the art and, and, you know, having nice murals like the one in Edgewood, the one John referenced, was that in the Beals, et cetera, being an asset to the community. I guess I can be a little rigid in wanting things to be consistent throughout our city as far as what's allowed in our neighborhoods, Edgewood, West Homewood, Hollywood. And I guess I, I guess I'm making the case for taking a step back and making sure that we're consistent throughout the city about what's allowed and how it is determined to go up. And if, if it's a, if it's putting it before the, the board, the, not the, I guess it is the beautification board.
Just shot me a text and said, don't forget the Arts Council.
So just. Yeah, and the Arts Council too. However, it is, but I think that brings up, I think you've raised a great suggestion, Councilwoman Andrews, is that this is a situation where I think we, we take a step back, we send this text back to a subcommittee, and then we get together with the council to make sure that however we address the West Homewood is done, and then also from a sign, art ordinance, whatever it is, that it's done properly and consistently throughout the city.
And Jeff, I couldn't agree with you more. And Jennifer, I agree 100%. I think it's unique to the city to be able to have some of these murals up there that people can go to and take selfies at and family portraits or whatever they want to do. I think it's unique, just like the ornaments, the Christmas ornaments that we have of, of unique areas of downtown Homewood that we've had forever. But Jeff, I agree with you, and that's kind of why my comment was what it was. We need some consistency. I, you know, when I'm in this position, I'm speaking for the fairness of everybody. If we've allowed four to go up that just appeared for whatever reason, and now we have one person asking, and we're going to tell him, no, we allowed four others to go up, that's not consistent either. And so that, I agree with you, there needs to be some consistency all the way around. But we also have to take into account how we've handled this up till now also, right? For, it's almost punishing now for the individual who's asking permission versus the four that didn't ask permission, right? So the consistency needs to be how we deal with them and what is, what is in the plan and what is at state can be done. So I think we need to take that into account also.
You know, my thought on it is, I would have less heartburn if these were kept in the villages, so to speak, where they have more residential and more input from the residents than the downtown district. That's just my thoughts on it. I'm just not a fan of that going into our Homewood downtown district.
And can I make one more comment? I just wanted to see if, whether or not we do take up the mural tonight, can we move forward on his roof sign? So can we split those two? That's a procedural question.
Yeah, that, that we can't, yeah, that, that is not an issue. I did have a comment to Vicki on the roof signage there. If the text amendment should mirror those in our current sign ordinance for roof signs, but we can take that up as a second item if the commission prefers to do it that way. Vicki, I see your comment here. Would have to allow any other signs than those listed. People that do stuff against the code do not necessarily need consideration.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if they're doing something against the code, absolutely. Yeah, I, you know, so first things first, from a commission standpoint, I believe Ms. Andrews is making a motion to split the mural and sign. I have no personal objection of that. I guess the question for Vicki or Wyatt is, from, I guess from a staff perspective, it doesn't matter.
I'll second that, if that's a motion she's making.
And so just so I'm clear on this, I guess if we're making text changes to the zoning book, this is still going to have to go back before council for review and approval.
No, no, okay, wait a minute. We're not, we're definitely not trying to make a text amendment, otherwise it would go to council. That was the whole, what we want to do is, a case-by-case basis, they would have to approach Planning Commission about integrating another sign type. If we add it to the text, it will be a by right. That means.
Well, no, I, I totally get, I agree with what you're saying. I was just reading the purpose here.
Yes, initially, that's what we thought, and the more we looked into it, the scarier it got. So, and we were confused, you know, obviously the West Homewood District ordinance is a funny animal, but why it was worded the way it was, they listed a certain number of sign types you were allowed. And then it's got that one sentence that says, the Planning Commission may integrate other sign types. Now, if it was a text amendment, regardless of whether y'all initiated it or not, it still has to go to the council, because that's a text amendment. But if we look at it as a, a case-by-case basis, then it wouldn't be necessary, we would just, it wouldn't be a text amendment, the ordinance wouldn't change, it would just say people can come to the Planning Commission and request another sign type. Now, I know that's convoluted, and again, that's West Homewood ordinance, but if we, if it's a text amendment, you're right, it'll have to then go from Planning Commission to City Council, and it would become a part of the ordinance, and it would become a by right choice.
Yes, which I am right.
And I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't want West Homewood to look like that. I don't want it to be a by right. I want it to be, if they're gonna have them, I want it to be carefully chosen, carefully done, so that we don't end up with a lot of graffiti.
Exactly.
Hey, this is Stuart Roberts, just from a procedural standpoint, this is an application for a text amendment.
Yeah, that's, that's what, I guess I've hung up on that too, Stuart.
Anyone looking at our agenda?
I guess, Stewart's comment, with the applicant not here, I'm not sure, I mean, the application is for a text amendment.
Well, actually, they asked us for a variance first, and we said, wait a minute, that's going to be a text amendment. Since we're going to put it off and work on it a little bit longer, we'll re-advertise it.
Okay.
And clean that up.
Okay.
So how about I make a motion to table this?
I would.
Carry on.
In favor of that.
Yeah.
Can I clarify, are we tabling the whole issue or just the mural? I'm just, my only concern is that they have no signage at their business. I know this has been going on for a few months, so that was my reason for clarifying.
So if we, if we make the text amendment, so the purpose here is to integrate two additional sign types. I have no.
Jennifer, help me understand, what do you mean they don't have any signage for their business?
Did they not, have they not put their, I guess I have not driven by their, I mean, I have, but I didn't look, I apologize. I was thinking that they had not put in their signs, that they were waiting for us on that.
No, so, so this mural has nothing to do with the businesses over there. This is for the.
That's why, that's the roof sign. Had we approved, did we approve the roof sign, another roof sign came to us and to council, came to council and got kicked back to you guys, I'm sorry, I'm, my brain is.
So Ash has signage up, roof signage and everything. The other businesses have not been filled yet, they don't have leases, so we're, we're okay. I just wanted to make sure we clarify that. I thought, no, no, I thought maybe I missed something, Jennifer, that's why I was asking you, I was like, whoa, did we miss something? No, 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 I think we're fine.
I think I was getting the order of events confused, and it's easy to do that to me these days, so I apologize.
No, and thank you, there is a comment in the chat that they do have actually five signs, someone took time to count for us. So, yeah, you know, again, with the applicant not here, I'm in favor of carrying this over. And again, going back to Mrs. Andrews' suggestions, trying to find a solution that's consistent throughout the city.
Oh, man.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second.
All right. Let me get clarification, is the motion to table the item until next month or table it indefinitely? What is the motion?
Table it, table it till next month.
Till next month.
That was my motion.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought. Mr. Woods had made the initial motion, and I thought Mr. Cronteras seconded that initial motion, so.
Jeff, Wyatt has raised his hand, I don't know if he wants to say something.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I just wanted to clarify, we were over at Ash last week. They do have some window signs, window signage and such, but the sign that they're waiting on is the sign that sticks up above the roof, and they do not have that one up yet.
Okay, thank you, Wyatt. That, that's the one, that's the one. That's what the question I was asking earlier is, could we divide out the mural from the roof sign?
But, well, I guess to that, to that point, I mean, we're still, are we still not making a text change to the zoning book to allow this type of roof sign?
And if we are, Jeff, looking again at the activity on the first page of this, the activity requested by the applicant, it says addition of murals to signs, I don't see anything about the, other than a drawing, a couple drawings of the roof sign, I don't see, maybe I'm missing a page, I don't see anything here about adding roof signs as an approved sign or loud sign under the ordinance. That's why I was a little confused as to what we were splitting up, because I only really see murals listed.
And I don't, I don't think that's a rush, I think that's something we need to wait on. Ash has plenty of signs up, they've been in business a while, there's signs everywhere. They just put up that banner. I mean, I think we need the applicant here to clarify this more for us, and I don't think there's anything we can do till we have him back here.
I would suggest again that the, the application itself will be more clear about what is being requested, what we're supposed to vote on. So procedurally, are we, I heard the word tabling, are we just carrying this over to next month?
Well, so without procedurally, hold on, let me check my little book here.
The motion's been made and seconded to table for 30 days, right? For one month?
I'm not a, I want to make sure.
Here's, the, the reason I said table it was I think it needs more work before it comes back to us. We can't carry over what we have right now, because what we have right now doesn't, is not what we need. Am I wrong? That's what I, why I said table it. I think more needs to be done. What, if we carry over what we have, are we not going to, next week or 30 days from now, they're going to have to go back and tell us exactly what they're looking for again and make the changes? Or do what we have now, can we work with this in 30 days?
But it, it's going to have to be, if, if it's carried over, it gets, they can edit and repost, and Ms. Smith or Fred can correct me if I'm wrong on that. When we table something, we're tabling it as it's done.
Okay. So let's make a motion to carry it over for 30 days.
You would, just bear with me one, one second, I just want to make sure I've done this correctly.
to make the motion to bring the item back from the table in a month? And then.
Yes, that is, that is not the issue. Correct.
Would they not be able to then?
Yeah, that, that said, if the applicant is making a change to the, the, the reason purpose stated that was advertised, I guess is what I want to make sure about.
Mr. Chairman, John Cronteras here, I, I have a, I have a question, I agree with the vote, I have no problem with the vote. But the question that I have, and I'd like somebody or somebody from the Planning Commission to tell me, what's the difference between Homewood and West Homewood? I mean, why West Homewood is treated different for many, many, many years, and not just for this mural? And, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know if we can give me an answer to this, but to me, it doesn't make any sense. Yeah, we're treating West Homewood like a different city, and that's not the way it should be.
Right, but John, we can't, we're not going to be able to address that tonight, right now.
Well, that's fine, I mean, I, I just want to raise the question, because it's not the first time about the mural, there have been other cases in the past that things are different in West Homewood, that, you know, something needs to be clarified to me and to the citizens of the entire city, as to why things are different in West Homewood than it is in the rest of the Homewood.
Well, John, we can talk to you about that. Having lived over here forever, I know it has to do with the West Homewood District Code that was put together, and you and I can talk about that offline.
But I think most of us agree with, with your suggestion.
Oh, absolutely.
It's, it's basically in, in response to, it was set up, it was a form-based zoning that was set up for the boundaries of West Homewood, working with the Regional Planning Commission, and there were many different standards that, that applied under that form-based zoning that made it differ from the rest of the city of Homewood. So that's why you have something somewhat sort of peculiar to West Homewood. It, it all goes back to a form-based zoning that was set up for, for that boundary area. So that's, that's the reason, really.
That is correct. Thanks, Fred.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you all for your patience. Well, I just confirmed in my, uh, rulebook here. I, I think that laying on the table is the correct way to do this. Um, as it allows us to, uh, suspend consideration of the case, uh, in order to deal with another matter, which I think is, um, the, the the proposed purpose listed here. Um, that's my read of what would be best, in my opinion. Especially given that the reason, purpose stated in, in the agenda is, you know, to integrate two additional sign types and review criteria within the, which to me reads as a text change.
So again, I don't have Robert's rules of order in front of me, but when you table it, you're not, are you tabling for a specific length of time or table it until the planning commission decides to take it off the table for?
It depends on how the motion is, Fred, and I, and I'm motioning to table it for 30 days.
30 days, okay.
Okay. I, I also, I also wanna go on the record. I am completely understanding and sympathetic to the business wanting to make sure they have signage or, or proper signage up. And so I just wanna make sure we address this correctly, though, for the city standpoint. Any other comments on this from staff? As you probably had more interaction with Mr. Walchuk and Mr. Canagio.
Actually, I have not. I haven't turned over them at all.
Vicky, did we lose Vicky? Uh, you know, that, that would be my other issue with this is the applicant is not here to, uh, state their case. Uh, which is why I would support a tabling of this.
Well, this is, this is Stuart Roberts again, and, um, whether the nomenclature is carry over a table, I, I don't think, if we're voting on, if there's going to be a request to add a, a rooftop sign.
Yep.
I think we need a new application. Now, would the city waive the cost for that? I don't know. That might be a different issue, but I don't think we can proceed, whether we table or carry over whatever we call this, if this comes back up in front of us, we're still gonna have the same deficit. If they cure the deficit, it's a new application that needs to be noticed and published and made available to the public. So I, I, I don't, I, I think probably, I mean, typically when we carry things over, it's usually at the request of the applicant, maybe with some nudging from us. Uh, I don't know that tabling does us, does us any good if we're allowed to table in this circumstance. Um, but it seems like it has to be, there, there has to be another application done. It has to be re-noticed, and then we have to then consider it. In the meantime, we can, you know, we can think about all the other issues we've discussed, but my, my concern is if we table it, there's, there's not an opportunity to amend or to fix the, the deficiencies that I'm seeing in this application.
I guess I would add to that, if we're tabling for 30 days, that is in essence the same thing as carrying over to next month, is it not?
Yes, I mean, essentially, that's the, that's the ultimate outcome. To Stuart's point, the reason I thought tabling was better was because it would allow us to consider additional, um, um, information that comes up, comes up quote unquote unexpectedly, which I felt like this, you know, someone may argue this.
Well, I get, back and, I might not be, be, um, I might be confusing obligations between BZA and, and planning commission, but aren't we obligated to, to provide notice to the public of what we're voting on? And if we're voting on a, on a roof sign next month, then it's not part of the packet. I think we're stepping outside of our, of what we're allowed to do.
Was just, was this not, uh, addressed as a rooftop sign all along?
The rooftop sign portion, the pictures, and it was, um, I can't remember if there's a letter of intent there or not, talked about the rooftop sign. I don't know if you all should have a full package showing the mural and the rooftop sign, and, um, that was always a part of the submittal.
Vicky, you need to try to move back in that spot you were in a little while ago.
Well, I think, I, I was, is it any better?
There you go.
Okay, um, that was always a part of the submittal, of those pictures of showing the mural and the roof. It was always a part of it. I think they focused on the mural for some reason more so, but they always. The sound was in the beginning, but then the monkey wrench and that, and we've just been struggling with this ever since because we did not want to go to text amendment. Even though that's what, I think that's what they wanted. But, and the, and the ordinance, the West Homewood District ordinance, it's very confusing. Um, whether, when it says the planning commission can integrate, integrate other signs, um, it's like, well, what do they mean? But I mean, if it's integrated permanently, then of course that's a text amendment. Or does it mean they can choose based on the, um, application and the setting, whether or not they want to allow it? It's not clear. But, you know, the, the West Homewood District is rather small, and uh, if we do a text amendment and it's a choice by right, I just, you know, I just see it as, um, not very attractive for that area.
Vicky, I apologize. I heard very little of, of all that. You just said, uh, I hope Jeffrey heard it.
I, I did. I, I'm sorry. I was reading sign standards as it relates to the question on the roof sign. You know, our, our current, again, this goes back to the comment I made earlier, our current sign ordinance is very specific about the placement of signs, especially roof signs and how they can be affixed to structure. And, and, you know, the West Homewood code uses some pictures to sort of display, display this. I do not see any that or any detail that would allow a sign to go, um, as it is described in the applications packet above the roof line.
Right.
And Mr. Pew or Ms. Smith can comment on that, but I, I don't see where that, again, same issue is allowed, and, you know.
The roof, the roof signs that stick up above the roof line are not allowed anywhere.
Yeah. Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yep, that's, that's right. Uh, you know, so again, the applicant is not here. Mr. Roberts has concerns about the activity requested on, on the page. I have concerns about the purpose of the text amendment. You know, I, I, you know, I, I, reading the procedure, I think tabling is the best thing to do. Um, I, regardless of what happens, if this is tabled and then they decide to put forward a different application, I, I, either, either whether it's tabled or, or not, I, I think if they have to do a different application to, to, to redefine their request, I think that happens regardless. But that's the way I'm, that's my thinking.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have a record that would allow us to vote on, um, the, the, the rooftop sign.
No.
There, there, it's been a drawing, a lot of things in those drawings.
Yep.
Um, I think, I think the application has to be clear on its face what, what's being requested, and it's just not outside of the mural.
Yeah. I would agree.
In, in my, my view is, is if they're gonna have to fix the application anyway, I think it's gonna have to go back through the process. Um, and, you know, my, my view on it is we, we, we deny the, we deny the, based on the, the, we did not have anyone appear to argue that the case, we did not have anyone to appear to ask for it to be carried over, but we could deny it. At least, this again, I'm just speaking for myself, but deny it with the, uh, you know, with the applicant having the, the right to reapply to correct the deficiencies, you know, if the city, the city can deal with, um, however they see fit with any, any costs associated with that. I think, I think just saying tabling is, gets us right back where we are right now with the same deficiencies we're facing now. We could table and vote on the mural, but I don't think that the sign that, on the rooftop sign could be part of that discussion. Unless there's a new application.
No, I would agree with you, Stuart. I mean, yeah, I, 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 you know, I'm, I'm trying to do what I can to help the applicant out, but I, you know, Stuart is making a very good case and point here, in my opinion.
So we drop it and let them come back with a whole new application?
Yeah, I, I mean, can't, candidly, I mean, they, they've not appeared, so state their case. I, I'm not sure. You know.
We start immediate work on a citywide mural policy?
I, I think that that should absolutely, I agree. I think that should happen. I, I don't have a, yeah, we can do that. It can go, we can start it with the subcommittee, um, to start on that because it would involve, you know, potentially text changes. To either the sign or the, uh, now, signs, though, are covered under council, Ms. Andrews, so that's, uh, another good question. We could propose changes to the sign ordinance for council consideration. Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I agree with Stuart. With the applicant not being here, I, I'm, I'm more in favor of declining this and, and, and starting over.
Do you need a motion, Jeff?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I hate to do this, but, um.
I have no choice.
And, and is it procedurally similar in council in that we make, someone makes the motion and you make a, it has to be a positive motion and the vote is up or down?
Correct.
Okay, I, I will move to approve the application as it is.
We have a, Ms. Andrews for, to approve TX 2006 in a second, I think, by Mr. Riddle. Brad, will you call the roll?
All right. Chief Hill.
No.
Mr. Cronteras.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
No.
Mr. Roberts.
No.
Ms. Andrews.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Mr. Woods.
No.
Mr. Foster.
No. Um, thank you very much, everyone, for, um, your time, uh, this evening. I appreciate it. Fred, staff for staying on late. Uh, Vicky Wyatt, um, happy to discuss this and, and next steps to try and help the applicant here to get signage up. And then also, um, Jennifer, if there's anything, you know, we can do from a planning commission standpoint to move this forward for uh, murals, artwork in our community, I, I think that's a great idea.
Jeff, I will send an email right now to Alex and copy you, and let's get to work on this. I, I've actually had it on my list based on that conversation that Vicky and Sherry and I had a couple of weeks ago. So, um, I'll send that as soon as we hang up.
Yeah, that'd be great. I, you know, again, I think Mr. Woods and I, you, we all, there's some artwork in the city we're, we're really excited about and we think represents the community well. I just, I think that'd be a, a wonderful, um, addition, if we can figure out a way to, to do it in a way that, um, you know, is, is brightens Homewood and is consistent throughout the city.
Jennifer, I'd appreciate it if you'd copied me on that email.
Yeah, I sure will.
Thank you.
Okay, um, are there any other, uh, questions, um, tonight? Vicky Wyatt, I, you know, regrets if this causes you any additional heartburn tomorrow, um, but, uh, I, I agree. I, I don't wanna make a text amendment, which is, um.
Here.
Vicky, I'll give you a call after the meeting.
Hey, I think Taco Bell's drive-through is better than Vicky's speaker. I've never heard anything like this at the office.
All right, well, is there any other business from commission members or staff? There being none, do they have a motion?
One more, one more business. The Y receiver of Alabama got the Heisman Trophy.
John, John, you're supposed to be focused on city business right now, not anything else.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Who in this group thought he would never receive that? That was a.
See what you did there. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I made a, I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second from Mark. The motion was made by Mr. Cronteras. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. There being no opposed, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.